Right, okay then, uh this is a. Just a personal journal really and a testimony. An account of, see this magazine. Now, this come through my door. Uh three days ago now. It's a local Rushmore Borough Council. I don't know if it's an annual magazine, it's the first time. I've really noticed it coming through the door. I'm not saying it has, it hasn't, but um. I noticed this one and it wasn't discarded. And I was reading through it, you know, just some interest, uh. There's a young la- young woman there who's won a photo competition. And it's got all the news of the local borough and the, uh, the council's intentions and. Uh, and what's going on in the community and uh. It's got a list of all the councillors, the local councillors. Our local councillors in each ward that they uh represent. Uh if you can see, that's what I'm zooming. Get in focus. So we've got um all our different wards. You've got the mayor, deputy mayor, leader of the council, and then all the, all the wards. That they uh have jurisdiction, you know, where they serve. Now. Still the email addresses. Well, I thought I was quite in my right to um. Witness, I'm a, I'm a born again Christian and I thought it would be a good opportunity to share my thoughts. And uh share the gospel of Jesus Christ. Now. I sent that with all good faith and intentions, without any malice. I'll show you my emails. I'm gonna show you all the emails and the responses. And the omission of responses, more importantly. Um. So. Let me find the original email. So I was quite within my rights, within my liberty, shared a gospel. And one of the things I wanted to really stress was the, the true meaning of uh November the fifth. Now, growing up, I didn't really have much of an idea what all the politics and. And the gunpowder plot and to overthrow the uh the King, King James the first uh. And it was all, if you, if you study it really carefully and dig deep, you'll see that i- it was a. And this kind of like in a group, a band of assassins, uh. And behind them was uh the Catholic Church, the Roman Catholic Church. Now, it's the same people. It's the same system today. They haven't changed their beliefs. They still murder Jews and Christians. They're a, a political, military. Machine. They're a law unto themselves and they still work and have their fingers in all sorts of pies through masonry. The Jesuits, the, i- it's a real, real n- nest of vipers and it. And you've, I'd encourage you to really look behind the curtain and investigate and. A- and, and if you're sincere and you're honest and you're open, you will, you will, you will learn the truth of th- these wicked people. There's just been. So much documentation, so many politicians, so many kings in the past witnessing that they. You know, they're heretics and they accuse the genuine people of being heretics themselves and then ban them. And that, and they get other people to do the dirty work. They infiltrate colleges, hospitals, schools. And they just divide to conquer. They are a wicked, wicked group of people. And it's an evil secret masquerade and it's still active today. But the world is ignorant of these uh points and that's why we had Bonfire Night. Um King James actually. Gave a commission, if you study this through and, and, and look at the history. King James gave a commission to commemorate this day and, and for the nation, our. And our freedoms, for our, A, our government, our royal family and um. The citizens of this country that those people swear oaths to protect, to put first. And it all, it all ties in, into this and, and you'll see that there's no. How far away we are from the truth really and how detached we are from our own heritage and history. And I just, first, first I, I wanted to give the most important thing in, in our lives, a salvation. If you're not born again, you're lost. And the Bible says if you're lost, you will perish in hell. And um. That's a horrible thing, that's a frightening thing. So i- if you're a, a loving, caring. Born again Christian, you've got the love of Christ. I'm not talking about our own love and our own. Natural desires and I'm talking about the genuine love of the saviour, of the Lord, God and creator of this world. If you've received that love, you have a, you have his love for others and. And your first point of call is to warn people of um, of the dangers and, and. And the reality of you die, you're judged, you go to hell. And the, and the mercy of, and the precious blood of Jesus Christ and what he did on the cross to save people from that fate. And that was my first, my first offer. Now, I wa-. I didn't wanna get into a ba- debate, I was just offering the gospel and moving on. And then with, from an own personal note, and I, and I've been studying this through recently and I thought, oh, this is a good opportunity. Once this comes through the door, I thought, oh, this is a great opportunity to share my feelings. And, and my thoughts and my concerns. And my concerns was, we've lost the meaning of the fifth of November. Now, people just think it's called Bonfire Night, you know, the youth growing up today, they're just washed in all the. Corruption and the, and the mass donations that go behind the sponsoring of the image of the world holding up. And anything goes and all this wicked thing, even these people have to deal with. You know, these councillors are, are up against it, they're in the midst of it. And um I can't speak for them personally, I, I could probably perhaps speak for one or two. But um, but not fully, you know, I don't know any person's heart fully, that's, that's. Only the Lord God knows what's in really deep down in people's hearts and, and understands the complete context of their whole life. I don't. I was simply passing a witness of salvation and sharing my concerns of uh November the fifth and the, the. We've lost the meaning of it and it's not taught. And I asked them and said, would you, reen? Because there's no mention of it in the arena, but about, there is a bit about Bonfire Night coming up. But there's no mention of, you know, the importance of uh Bonfire Night. Fireworks back with a bang, that, that's, that's really, unless, if, you know, there's nothing in the article. Nothing at all about the significance of November the fifth. And King James. You know, commissioned everybody on the fifth of November, he gave permission for any public member to light a fire. And to burn a fire and celebrate that victory, that, you know, that Christian victory, our Christian nation. Now, if you're not a Christian, um you, you're basically lawless because this, this country is founded on. Christian values and principles. People have lost their blood. People have been burnt at the stake to save. This nation from uh the wickedness of uh, of devils and the Catholic Church. Okay, a bit of an interruption, that was a, a postman. Right, where was I? Uh King James, say. King James gave a public permission to com- commemorate Bonfire Night and uh. To mark the devilry of the, you know, the popery, the, the Catholic Church and their intervention. And the continual meddling in our nation's politics, religion, their device. They infiltrate Christian religions and they deliberately teach falseness. So they, they give Christianity a bad name on purpose. They are wicked people, they do the same in governments, they get their little pawns in government and they. They influence their decisions from behind the scenes and the shadows. These are a, um. Like a, a, a branch of assassins, political assassins, uh militaries, they've got military wings. They've got connections to um Freemasonry, even, um. Islam, Islam's got its own um brotherhood, you know, it's all, it's all Freemasonic. And the, the Jesuits have access from the top in all these systems, uh Masonry. Mormonism, it's all the same, they're all, they're all pals together and they're. Now, on the window, on the window dressing, they all, they all look all independent. But from behind the scenes, you have these powerful people from this uh lawless Vatican City, this nation. Which infiltrates these um systems and uh corrupts, just corrupts. Anything, it just disrupts, these all wicked people. And um so that's why King James, now King James was a, a just. Simply, he was a sinful man, like every man, like every Christian, we're sinners, no man is perfect. But we um, we, we are saved by the grace. And the merit and the love and the precious blood of Jesus Christ. He saves us, he gives us a new heart. But we remain sinful people. And King James was no perfect man, but his heart. And the fruits of his work where he gave the public access to the Bible. Now, before that time, it was very difficult to, there were Bibles in existence and there was, there's two texts. There's the corrupt texts which come from, well, you can guess where, uh Vatican City. And then there's the, the faithful texts that were faithfully collected and there was thousands of thousands of copies. Now, people had to copy these texts and. They were correlated and gathered and interpreted by some of the. Uh King James got some of the greatest scholars of our time to try and faithfully translate. These uh, and it was a diverse group, there's Puritans, there was Catholics, there's a whole mixture of people. And it was done lawfully, lawful exegesis and a lawful model of, of a standard of truth to make sure it was. True. And these texts were faithfully copied and they, they were something like ninety nine point ninety eight percent. Correct. There was very little error and these errors were minor errors like a comma or. Perhaps a letter, you know, misspelled. There was, there, there was no dis- uh. Dis- uh anomalies in, in the text, they were all word for word perfect. The Old Testament and the New Testament. And anything they weren't sure about, they left out of the King James. So the King James Bible is a, a gift, it's a free gift to every man, woman and child. Now, the Catholic Church have tried to destroy its credibility, they've, they've brought out all these new Bible versions and you can all. Do the research, they're all owned by um corrupt publishers who pub- also published. Uh, you know, uh satanic books and witchcraft books and new age books and all, all this rubbish. And the King James is a lawfully public. Work. And it's this, i- it's the word of God. Now, the, the scriptures even states that the Lord has said. That he will keep his word and preserve it. If you look at uh Psalm chapter twelve, Isaiah. Isaiah, uh forty verse eight, and there's many verses where prophets and men of God. That, that were moved by the Holy Spirit and testified of God's heart, mind and will. And that was recorded in the scriptures. And these were preserved and. King James had it uh faithfully translated after the Catholics burnt. The gentleman who was trying to bring it forth onto the world stage, the Catholics assassinated him and burned him as a heretic. Cause they claim authority from the apostleship of Peter, which is actually, if you read the Bible, it's. It's incorrect. Um any, any man, woman, and another thing is that the Catholic Church teaches its heresy. To say you can have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. Well, throughout the Bible, it counteracts what the. Catholic Church teaches. And uh Pope Francis claims that he's the head. Of the body of Christ, that's blasphemy, Jesus Christ. If you search the scriptures, you'll find that Jesus Christ is the head. He's the bishop, he's the author of the word, he is God, he's Lord and God and Creator. With his Father in heaven and the Holy Spirit, God the Holy Spirit, God the Father. God the Son, the Lord Jesus Christ and God the Holy Spirit. And these Catholic heretics are devils. They are false. And it's a false church, it's false doctrine and they, they just disrupt every single nation on this planet. And uh so King James, uh his, his work was to get this. Bible to the civilians cause he cared, he was a, you know, he had the heart, mind and will of God and he wanted to ensure that everyone was. Free from this deception of this popery. But the Catholic Church throughout the years have been. It just pumping loads of rubbish and raising up leaders and all these. Christian, so, so-called Christian churches and corrupting them and giving it Christianity a bad name. That's why people don't wanna know Christ. It's mainly down to the machinations of this, this body. So the King James is the remedy to that. It's given people like me, people, people, any, any, any soul on this planet. It can get a, a free copy of this book today. You can download it online, there's faithful translations of this text. So if anyone hasn't got a King James, I would advise you to get one and study it. Study it all the way through and, and, and seek that salvation offered for the forgiveness of sins. That's all sins, past, present and future. And that was, the Lord Jesus is faithful. The word of God is faithful, it's a faithful standard and it's preserved. All thanks to God and King James. And that's why there's so much, that's why the enemy, the devil, doesn't want you or the world to know about this. And that, and this is why we've lost the me, the real true significance of Bonfire Night. And you ask the question, why aren't they teaching it? You ask any youth today, uh there's a big gulf between our heritage and the future generation and they're trying to. Break it up and put a big gulf. So the people growing up in the future are completely separated from their heritage. And that's what I wanted to write to say, look, you've got an opportunity here to reinstall and educate people. And I, you know, I don't know whether they will or not, that, you, you know, we'll see. So thi- this was basically, I sent one email and um. Given that witness and, and, and my concerns and my thoughts on, well, let's teach the future generations since today, let's put. Let's put the truth, you know, i- it's in books, but people aren't gonna go and look. So it's an opportunity to like. Plop it on the table, you know, it, it's not offensive, it's the truth. Our foundation is built on these sacrifices, on these wars of Oliver Cromwell, you know. You know, there are so many historians, right or wrong, uh William of, you know. William, I think it's William the second, um you know, fought these Catholic kings. Who were dictators, they're like worse than Pol Pot and Hitler was a Catholic, he was faithful to the Catholic. He wasn't a Christian, he was just a profession Christian and favoured the power of the Catholic Church. The Catholic Church were behind uh the, the Third Reich and fascism, they sponsored it. And they, they were guilty, they even helped all the Nazi criminals escape and they hate the Jews. They hate the Jewish race, the Catholic Church. And then they mask, they, they sliver around on the stage like they're everybody's friend. They are devils and their judgement is due and it is coming. And anyone who's in fickle with them or associated to them is yoked to these people. And they are yoking people to lies, deceptions. So this is really, uh this was an exhortation and a warning to our, our local civil servants. You know, and, and to give them the opportunity because if they're anything like me, they've been robbed of the truth. I'm no, I'm nothing special. I had to learn, I was very naive. And I simply put myself to study these things through. And, and this is, and, and it was on my heart just to share what, what I knew. And this is what I'm recording. So I'm gonna fir- find the first email that I send, I think it's this one. Um. Right, there we go. Right, so there's, um I think it's about thirty nine people. Right, uh. I don't know if that's gonna be readable. Cause my eyesight's blurred, cause I had a car accident and it's. It's done my um eyesight in a bit, so I'm a bit short sighted, a long sighted. Well, I'll read it out. Dear Rushmore Borough Council, there is no greater matter than our personal salvation to be saved from hell. For rejecting the Lord Jesus Christ. And I'll put some scriptures, Second Corinthians six two. For he saith, I have heard thee in the time accepted and in the day of salvation have I succored thee. Behold, now is the accepted time. Behold, now is the day of salvation. Salvation is today in your lifetime, it's urgent, it's now, it's now or never. Um Acts twenty twenty one, testifying both to the Jews and also to the Greeks. Or anyone who's not, not a Jew. Repentance toward God and faith toward our Lord Jesus Christ. That is simply the gospel, the simplicity of the gospel is faith in Christ alone. Now, the Catholic Church. Wanna get in between that and rob you of your relationship and they're getting all the churches today to do exactly the fallacy. You know, and, and thankfully, a lot of churches still hold to the traditional. Uh Protestant, you know, I'm not a Protestant, I'm just a born again Bible believer, I don't go to church. I, I'm in church cause Christ is in me, I fellowship with Christ and God the Father and the Holy Spirit. And when, and when two people gather in the name of Christ, Christ is with them, that is the church. The church is the body of believers and they're all over the world, they don't all meet in the same building. They don't have um, uh, you know, like a collar wearing, one person running the whole show. It's i- 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 it's an organic body and ev- ev- every little church group's different, you know, every needs are different. And some might have larger bodies and, and have some apostle, or some pastoral responsibilities. And teaching responsibilities, but there's, you don't go to college to learn these things, the Lord raises them up from grassroots, off the ground. Right. Hebrews eleven six, but without faith it is impossible to please him, for he that cometh to God must believe that he is. And that he's a rewarder of them that diligently seek them. So these are some of the scriptures I've just wanted to highlight. It's an invitation to these people to seek the living God and repent and believe in Jesus Christ, to call on him and be saved. For, now, this is an important verse, you know, this, this knocks out, um. The Catholic Church, you know, like Paul, Paul the Apostle was appointed to, to sh- share the gospel to the Gentiles. The non-Jewish people. And that's all of the world today, other than the seed of Israel. I, and the gospel's always for the Jews, it's for the Jews first, it's of the Jews. Christ was a Jew. And, and in his ministry, the gospel wasn't preached to the rest of the world, the Gentiles. It was solely for the Jewish nation. And then aft- after his death, burial and resurrection and the, the death of the testator. Paul saw uh Jesus Christ, cause Paul persecuted the church. And Christ called him outside of the, his own ministry and Paul was raised up to be an apostle. He, and apostle means you've, you've seen the resurrected Lord. If you haven't seen the re- resurrected Lord, you're not an apostle. I, i- so I'm gonna read these scriptures, I, uh, first Timothy two, one to six, I exhort thee. I exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions and giving of thanks be made for all men. For kings, if all that are in authority, that we may lead a pe- a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in sight of God our saviour. See, there's nothing offensive there. Who will have all men to be saved and come unto the knowledge of the truth? For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself on the cross. A ransom for all, for all people to be testified in due time. So whether, whether you believe it or not. The Lord is faithful and he will come back and the whole world will know. And if you die in your sin, you'll be in hell. And you will know, you'll, you'll realise then. Right, this is another important verse, cause this eradicates the need for prophets. You know, and you get the Mormon church, they claim to be apostles and prophets. Well, this verse absolutely destroys. Their own, you know, profession of faith. And they will say, oh well, the Bible's not translated correctly. And, but they can't come out with a true, accurate, infallible. Uh translation. They won't rip out the scriptures, those part, their book of Mormon more isn't translated correctly. They're all over the place, they're divided and they're liars. And this, this scripture alone knocks it out of the water. Hebrews one, verse one and two, God who at sundry times and in divers manners spake in times past unto the fathers by the prophets. So they have all the prophets of the Old Testament, right up until John the Baptist. John the Baptist was the last prophet. And then Christ is the prophet. Then after Christ, there's no such thing as prophets. We're all, all believers are one in Christ Jesus and that's throughout the scriptures and he's the head of the church. There's no leadership in the church. There may be people with more responsibility who are leading by example. But they don't wear titles and collars and raise themselves up and say, look at me, I'm a leader. No, they're leaders through their love. And their responsibility that God alone gives them. And where every believer is in their liberty, where, how and where they serve. And they will, they will be guided in it by Christ and by his word, in doctrine. It's to steer their, keep their feet straight on the path. Verse two, having these last days spoken unto us by his son. Who he hath appointed heir of all things, by whom also he made the worlds. So. That eradicates it and, and Christ is the spirit of prophecy. He is the head of the church. He's the creator and he's heir of everything, this world and everything you, you see in the heavens is his work. So I've put, no need for a prophet today because we can have a personal relationship, Jesus Christ, our Lord and God and our heavenly Father. Through faith alone in him. Um Romans ten, uh verse thirteen. Who, for whosoever shall call upon the name of the Lord Jesus Christ shall be saved. And that, that was my basic gospel message, I allowed the scriptures to speak. You know, the Holy Spirit will convict people and it will testify of the truth, it testifies of the Father and the Son. It's a faithful witness of all truth. Right, this is my rebuke and exhortation, you are criminals. And seriously complacent against the tyranny and corruption which today is alarmingly widespread and genetic. Genetically in, inbred into each preceding generation. Lawfully serving hypocrites, feathering your own importance and going after your own Easter eggs on a hunt. And at the cost of all's future and freedoms. Now, why I wrote that is cause, you know, I was guilty. Just as guilty myself, cause of the ignorance, the lack of knowledge. I didn't, I didn't know anything, I was duped, just like we all are, we're all deceived and we've had the wall pour over our eyes. And this is all down to the machinations of Freemasonry. And, and when you study it through, the people, the powers behind this are. Are the synagogue of Satan, these evil men who are behind everything, they're behind the Catholic Church. They're behind Islam, they're behind all this falseness. And it's simple, peace is a free gift, it's always been here. And it's in Christ Jesus. If you reject that, you're, you're subject to Satan, it's Satan's world. Until Christ comes back in the end and, and, and deals with Satan himself. And only Christ can deal with Satan. He's the most powerful being other than Jesus Christ in existence. So this is my, this is, this is what I was getting to. Would you consider the true meaning of Firework Night or Bonfire Night? And reinstate and hold up the true and original significance of this commemoration given by King James the first. Which pres- preserved our nation's independent rights and all our civil liberties and freedoms from the tyranny of the Roman Cath- From the tyranny of the Roman Catholic Church, which is the same beast today as it was yesterday. Rather than solely focusing on the less significant matters of our borough. While neglecting such a high price play to preserve our rights. Which price alone is still being paid heavily today by those conscientious Bible believing few that remain faithful to the truth. Under the nose of the complicit and ignorant masses. Now, I sent a, a, a document, a, a government document about, just highlighting what I've expressed. But no one see, no one in the government who represents the government wants to do religion, or wants to, you know. No, religion's rubbish, what, it should be about the word of God and Jesus Christ, not religion. So that, tha- that's one document, and, and I put an attachment which is. And there's so many attachments I can chase through, so many kings who've spoken and testified and warned the same thing. And even our queen, um, state, she's against Catholic, she's a Protestant, she's a professor, she's against. The Catholic Church, but I don't, in, in the fruit, um, there's a scripture that says, by their fruits you should know them. And we'll see this a bit later on as I, I get to the end of this. By the, by, what, by people's actions you'll get. You, you can work out whether they're good fruit or bad fruit, whether their intentions are sincere, and they might look like a good. They might have a nice shiny face and smart and look really presentable and be really charming and kind. But, so, that, that can be a deceptive appearance, you know, the devil is charming, the devil is, is, is. You know, looked up to and admired and worshipped, you know, these people are in the image of the world, and I wanted to warn them. And, and try and point them to Christ and the significance of what we've lost. The majority of the population have lost the knowledge and significance of our law preserve from a he- heretical dictator and pontiff. And the likes have in- infiltrated our government and nation. Um, ask any young person, even adults, the true significance of bonfire night and what it represents. The answer, but will you, you be honest enough to acknowledge the truth? And even your arena magazine has no mention of the importance and significance of our fading heritage. The public call it firework night, and you do not burn a Guy Fawkes dummy. And neither do any local residents in their own homes, they have fireworks and barbecues. In my lifespan, living in Farborough, I've witnessed corruptions, murders of my family members. Willful cover-ups and many omissions by civil servants from all walks. Doctors, the police, councillors, teachers, church bodies, cult bodies, and undertakers. Nurses and the military, now. By the power of Satan, it's all tightly knit, this community is tightly knit, I've heard. Even, uh, councillor Clifford, I've heard him, I, I was once deceived and. And lied to by the Mormon church, who preyed on my testimony of Jesus Christ. And I was a very vulnerable person, I suffered from a childhood, uh, chronic childhood, childhood abuse. Um, and I suffer with post-traumatic stress, and I always will have that scar. And, um. I, I've experienced so much of this tight knitness, and the people, these devils will walk over people. Who are weak and poor, and when you call them out, they close rank, and they go and ring around, and they don't tell you what they're doing. And then you find you've got a lot of persecution on your doorstep, and you're wondering where it comes from. These people are connected, I can't, I can't, I can't prove it, I can't point it out, cause it's done in secret. And this is, these cowards, this is how they work, through the Masonic craft. Their secret little knits and their little groups and meetings, they may not be aware of it. But most of them are, go the, the least path of resistance to keep their, you know, cause when the. When it, when the problem gets too big, it's easier to just, you know, close rank. And hopefully it'll be brushed under the carpet, but there's too much brushed under the carpet, and you cannot keep brushing things under the carpet. You know, like paedophile rings, it's all protected, the whole police is corrupt with ma- with Freemasonry. And they know about these paedophile rings, they've known it for years, it's part of the vice. To co- to compromise people so they can be blackmailed, and it, it goes hand in hand with, unfortunately. It's grown out of hand, it goes hand in hand with our politics. And, and people are too frightened to stand up against it, cause they, they're frightened that they lose their own careers and their little ambitions. And, and, and this is the truth. Only, right, I'm gonna continue reading, only a very small minority. Uh. Stand for the truth is, i- i- in the not so distant past, homosexual. Homosexuality was rightly looked upon as an abomination to the Lord and God. Today it is a life choice promoted to schoolchildren along with gender life choices. And any opposition is met with the wicked tag of being labelled homophobic. Now, you, you get accused of being a hate, you, you're a hate crime, well, I'm sorry, I hate paedophiles, I hate liars. I hate murder, I hate crime, I hate deception, and I hate this wicked compromise. Call me, call me a hateful, hateful person, too right I am hateful, I hate. This disgusting behaviour, you know, and you're, you're tagged as a hateful person, these liberal. These po- these cons, most of the, most of our community is, uh, always being conservative dominated. You know, they cheat, they lie, they do whatever they can to play the game, cause that's how they've been raised, that's how they've been cultivated. To play these games of, um, dog eat dog, you know, they play dirty. And, and they all smile at your face like, you know, butter wouldn't melt in their mouth, and, and, and they're liberal. They, it's anything goes, as long as it suits the, you know, the status quo and the money and the influence and the. And the wicked people pulling the cart rope, you know, these people just wanna ride on the cart for their own, their own self. They're not for you, they're not for me, they're for themselves, and you will see. The fruits of this when I go through these emails. Uh, the lawless doctrine of Islam was well known to be a lie and a deception, deceptive machination against our nation's liberty. Teaching from their scripture, the Quran, it is a commandment. Now, you look, you get, buy a Quran and you check this out for yourself. The Quran i- i- is a commandment to kill Christians and Jews, which Islamists get more bias support. And, you, you know, you're not allowed to wear a cross, cause it offends the Islamic people. You know, what, what utter blimmin nonsense. Right, support than Chris, get more support than Christians or Jews, and again, you're la- labelled, you know, these little tags. Islamophobic by the deceived complacent in different socially engineered masses, now that is the truth. You cannot speak out again, these, these, these little terms are divisive terms. To every, e- every gullible person toes the line and goes with the crowd. Now, you need, now, I'm gonna invite you, you don't deceive yourself, think for yourself, because this is, this voice. Will rob you of your, your rhyme and reason and your, and your sensibleness, your common sense. And they will indoctrinate the future generations to just be, uh, Manchurian candidates to go with the flow. The satanic Luciferian, Luciferian Freemasonic iniquitous craft is highly established throughout our. Throughout our established nation, having its fingers in all pies. Dominating every town and city, along with its vices and perversions. Under the deceived lower members within its orders, which are all secretive and unlawful. For those in civil offices and duties to our nation's established laws, it is wicked and it's illegal. And it creates fear, it creates uncertainty, oh no, are they bad, aren't they bad, and. They are, they, study it through yourself, these are wicked, study, or, or as much as you can, and you're, you're drawing the dots up. Uh, you know, it doesn't matter how intelligent you are, you're intelligent enough. You know, to figure this out, it just takes simple, apply your heart and mind to it and search. And it's hard work, but you keep digging and you'll find the truth. I write in sincerity in godly fear. And I do fear God, I, it's like when, when I was young, I feared to, to break the rules in my house. I feared to upset my parents, I feared them, because I love God, I fear him, I fear. I fear, I fear doing the wrong thing, cause I know God, I've been saved by God. Why on earth would I want to lie, why would I want to cheat, why would I want to break the law? You know, I'm guilty, I've broke the speed limit, but I repent, I apologise when I do something wrong and. God keeps me on the straight and narrow, but if you're unrepentant, you can say sorry. And you can keep saying sorry, I won't do that again, oh, I won't do that again, I won't do that again. You know, it has, you, you, you need to change your heart, and only Christ can change your heart, and you need his heart. And without that, y- y- you're kidding yourself that you can change, you'll just keep going round like a washing machine cycle, repenting of your sins. You might, you might have the strength to conquer certain things, but you're still that sinful-hearted person. And we're all that, if we're honest with ourselves, we are all wicked, we're all capable of some wicked things, and that's the truth. And if you deny that, you, you, you've got your head up your backside, I'm afraid. I write in sincerity in godly fear and love towards yourselves, not my love, Christ's love, and your families and all people in our community. I have a concern for, because I have a concern for Christ, I'm jealous for Christ, as he is. I can't, I haven't, I haven't got his fullness, I haven't got his full heart, but I, I am. In his fullness, I am a, a child of his fullness, and I have that heart, in my heart, and that's what I was sharing. I have no umbrage against any man, woman or child, regardless of their beliefs or cultural heritage. I don't, I'm, I'm non-political, I don't, I don't get caught up in this, oh, you're anti-immigration. Immigration, when you look at it, it's, it's down to the, um, it's down to the Pope again, getting, he's got all his fingers in, he's got. He's got a seat in the European Parliament, and, and he's not elected, but he has clout, he has power. He has influence, and it's called the Treaty of Rome, and when you comb through it, he's behind all the, um. The, the, the lies about, um, global warming, now look, you know. Uh, there's no doubt our world is in trouble because of our selfish behaviour, but they're gonna milk it. And, and then they're starting to taxing people, and this is, the, the Treaty of Rome was the fourth. Because we were a part of Europe, now I'm still, I, I still don't think we're gonna get out of Europe, because they're doing all they can to. To keep our fingers and association, they use free trade now, but all the, all the. Nations outside of Europe trade freely, you know, you don't, you don't need this organised body to trade, people are quite capable. Of trading on their own, free trade is a lie, it's to control trade in the name of free trade. You know, we're quite capable of trading with China, Japan, you know, any nation that wants to do business. Uh, we have something to offer, and we got, we want something from them, we're quite capable, you know, there's plenty of capable people in our government. You know, i- it's ridiculous, and, uh, it just, i- i- it's wicked, and, and, and I know the way the world's going. It's written in the book of Revelation, it's all throughout the scriptures, what's in man's heart. We, we, we could, um, have a perfect country, but the devil and the Catholic Church are gonna disrupt every good work. And they're gonna put spanners in the work and grit in the gears, that's their game. And until, you know, until the judgment of God is poured out, and Christ resolves this and as, as. As a consequence, cause he's a long-suffering God, he will allow free choice. Now, I wasn't robbing these people, I wasn't forcing it down their necks, I was simply providing something for them to freely choose. Or freely reject, you know, it's, they're, they're totally entitled to their choice. To either believe the gospel or reject it, I'm not, I'm not, um, you know, Christians aren't, uh, warmongers. They don't go out to fight, they may fight to defend their loved ones and perhaps their nation. Under, under physical attack, but they don't go out on the attack. You know, at war with the Catholic Church, you know, I don't agree with that, I don't think that's scriptural. And I certainly don't support any, any sort of behaviour like that, you know, it's love your enemy, suffer them, you know, keep out the way of them if you're. I- i- if you can, separate from them, but don't war with people, it's to love. For a Christian life, it's, it's long suffering and you share the gospel and move on. And you will, you will, you will take a knock, you will take a, abuse, you will take, um. All, all sorts of afflictions and persecutions, i- it's part of being a Christian. And you, you, you speak to anyone that stands up for the truth, Christian or not, you're going against the world and you're gonna get your face smacked and your nose bloody. And you're gonna be pushed over people's shoulders, you know, there's so many devices against good conscientious people. And these, and this is what I was appealing to, to help these people, to support these people. So, um, I simply would like to see them all saved, along with the preserving of our rights and freedoms and our God-given heritage. I want, wanted to educate people where I've been educated, I'm not a, I'm not a teacher. I'm not, you know, I'm just sharing what I've learned and passing that on to these, um. Hardworking people of, of communities, and every community's got these people. And, and I can't speak for all of them, but when you look at it, they're all capably, capable people, they're hardworking, otherwise they wouldn't be there. So that, you know, tha- that was my intention and motive. Praying for peace, the salvation for yourselves and families, and, and to see a turnaround for all our futures. And the continuing of all the hard work and dedication given by the likes of yourselves. And the conscientious persons that serve and help provide a better living environment for ourselves and the future generations to come. Yours sincerely, Andrew Hopgood, Farborough. Now, I wasn't licking their bees, I simp, you know, simply being honest, you know, I don't, I have nothing personal against any one of these people. I didn't want to undermine, but that, you know, anything, any hard work they're doing, I simply wanted to speak for the truth. And none of us are beyond correction, I'm not beyond correction, I, I, I'm crea- I'm corrected, you know, at least once a day. You know, by my conscience, and I sent the Queen's declaration, i- i- it was a letter written. You know, about the opposition, the Queen spoke out on her coronation against popery, she had a test, she brought her testimony. And every, every Protestant king lawfully is not allowed to associate with the Catholic Church. But I'm afraid today, from the ecumenical movement, every church is yoked. So Vatican II, the ecumenical and the, the false evangelical units, the UK. The World Council of Churches, they're all in bed with the Catholic Church, and that's what you, that's why. That's what you need to look at, they're either indirectly or directly connected, and no, no, no one's speaking out against it. Just a, a dusting of a few people, a few Bible believing Christians who very rarely get heard. Cause they're not, you know, the world's dominated by these people, and anything good. Is corrupted, it's destroyed, it's kept off the mainstream media, and it's shut down. And so that, that was my email, I didn't even respect, eh, expect a response from anybody. So, um. I'm, I'm just gonna highlight, right, out of all those, uh, let me see, roughly forty councillors. This is three days ago, only, I had three responses, one was malicious, one was awful. You know, and it quite, you know, and be, and suffering with post-traumatic stress from, from, uh, being assaulted as a two-year-old. And, um, I carry, I carry that through my life, and I look after my elderly father, you know, he's vulnerable, he's got dementia. And to get a response, uh, Terry Bridgeman, you know, he, he's, he responded. Before that was, um, David Bell. He kindly responded, you know, uh, you know, he, 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 he was, to me, he was genuine, he gave me a gen- a genuine response. Um. Let me see if I can find it. Uh, West Heath Ward, Dave Bell, um, I'm not sure what political party he is, I think he may be UKIP. And, and the other person actually personally visited me, and he was a genuine, he was genuine. I discerned he was genuine, because his fruit was honest and sincere, and he actually took, he's not even of my ward. And he took his time to come around to just, you know, say about my concerns, cause I. And he took his time to come around to just, you know, say about my concerns, cause I. I I the 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 abuse I got from Terry Bridgeman, I removed Terry Bridgeman from the email list. And and let all his colleagues know what sort of man he was, and the sort of behaviour that these people. Uh behave. Now, Barbara P D Hurst, sh- her uh email was blocked. John, John H Marsh was blocked, but that was my own fault, that was a spelling mistake. But Barbara P D Hurst uh dot com, let me just check her the spelling, just so I'm not um condemning the woman. Um, I double-checked it earlier and I'm sure I I correctly, so unless it's a spelling mistake in here. But sh- she's my ward, yeah, there's there's the um email address. Um, she's my ward councillor, she blocks your email. So if you've got a problem, you're not gonna get through to that woman. I can't say about uh Mister Marsh because I. It's John H Marsh, I I um admitted the H, so I I can't say whether that. Uh I'm not gonna email him now, um hopefully his colleagues will share on the email, I may email him with a a copy, but. After all this, you know, I've had enough of it, I I just wanted to give a witness and move on. So I'm gonna go to my response of Mister Bridgeman. Um, I won't show you Dave Bell, that's personal, he just said thank you, you know, if you're timely posting, your kind thoughts are appreciated. I hope, hope you're in good health, um and and he just mentioned he he has his own faith, but you know, fair enough, he. He he took the time, so out of forty people, I got three responses, now that, to me, that says a lot. You know, right, let's go to uh Mister Bridgeman. Um, please do not send me any more of this illiterate hypocritical nonsense, you clearly need help. You know, um, yeah, well, thank you, Mister Terry Bridgeman, now, uh, what, you know, did I. Personally assault you? No, I didn't, I just shared you the gospel, illiterate, so. He's always, he's al- he's gone straight for my character, now I didn't say anything about him personally. Let's see if I can get his picture. Uh, let's see, I can go, you can Google him and um. You can you can get his profile picture yourself. Uh so, there we go, that that was the response, um. Alright, I don't know where my reply was. Oh, there is he. There's my response, you're clearly convicted, Terry, what I mean is his his conscience was pricked. Repent, you wicked, lying, lawless hypocrite and deluded prick, I don't mean our penis, I mean our form. Uh Mason, question mark, do not send insulting emails to me if you have a problem with me personally. Come out in the public and we will deal with it openly, so the public can see the type of man that represents this community. When you actually look at the law, these representatives claim to be lawful. Now, a lawful, really, to truly be a lawful, you've got to support your queen, now. Uh I may have differences of opinion in faith with with Queen Elizabeth, but she she, you know, she's a Christian. And she's the Protestant head, you know, she's a defender of the the Church of England, so. If you don't agree with that, you really, you you're unlawfully representing our nation. And and it shows that you don't really care about civilians, a- and you only have to look at the law. To to s- to see that. So that was my response, um. So that was that one. Uh, let's see. I don't know where is that though. If you had the courage to put your address on our word, however, your commu- communication is hate mail. I have no, I have now forwarded it up to the police, you know, so he calls me an illiterate on his hands himself, he can't spell I T, you see. Now, he's accused me of hate mail, so this is the voice today, hate, you're a hater. You know, if you s- if you speak the truth, you you're a hater, and and you're gonna get the repoliced. Now, now I thought it, I didn't really know, to be honest, whether he would. Would would call the police and and it would basically go against me, and he he would toe rank and pull a few strings and. And and send the police around to have a talk, but I I kind of thought, no, he's 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 just blowing smoke. And and thankfully, nothing come of it, you know, cause that would have really upset me, that that that's disgusting behaviour from a politician, in my opinion. Um. Now, I'm gonna block this just in case, cause it gives up my address, uh. That was our response. Oh, now I've sent, now I've sent all the pe- I I. Now, I've removed him from the mailing list and and sent all the other councillors' correspondence back and forth between us. So I just wanna kind of quickly find the email, I'm turning the camera away, um. Can find it. So then, I um pulled his bluff, I put my name and address. I have a police officer close by to show this threatening email for my own protection, yours sincerely, Andrew. So I done that, and again, I was sha- I I I was sharing all this. Um. With the uh councillors, see, I sent it all to them, so they could see what sort of man is amongst their ranks. You know, they might not be aware of this, some of them might be chummy with the man, I don't know, um I let the lord deal with that. So I was threat, you know, that was an unlawful threat, right, I I, you know, if I was a gold digger and and. I wanted to, I don't want to undermine on, you know, I don't really, I'm not afraid of confrontation, but I'm I I'm well manned. This this will, I have a nervous condition, a post-traumatic stress, it's, you know, it's not something I can really deal with. So I, you know, I was seeking for peace, I didn't, I had nothing personal against um this gentleman, I I only. Wish him the best, but if he's guilty, well, so be it, you know, he is guilty, so let. Let his conscience prick him and and let him face the consequence of his own actions. So I put threatened unlawfully, no doubt you will all, and now I'm writing to all all of the other, all of the other colleagues. No doubt you will be um all stand by your man who uses the law to protect himself. I'm a vulnerable adult looking after my elderly father, if I get any trouble whatsoever. God will deal with this swiftly on my behalf, in the name of Jesus Christ the Lord, and I know he will, cause I've witnessed it before. From coming across these masons, and I'm sure he's a mason, and uh thick with a lot of. You know, people in 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 who've got um privileges and. And masons are all scratching each other's backs, and it's all in secret, and they're liars, it's deceptive. If you had the courage to put your address on our word, however, this community is hate mail, so basically showed him what they. He accused me of hypocrisy and illiteracy and he cannot spell I T, my response to Terry, I'll put my address there and have to edit it. Um, so so basically that was it. Now, following that, I had a visit from another gentleman. I don't, I'm not, like I say, I'm not party political, I'm not, I don't vote, I vote, I voted to come out of Europe. Because I I felt strongly about that, because I knew what what was behind it, it's the Pope. Injecting all these different people into our nation to cause controversy and and mix the water. To destroy our national identity, this was an opportunity for me and for our local councillors to actually. Get off their backsides and do something, you know, I can't, you you know, one person can't do something, it take. It takes a change of heart, and that's what I was offering. The other gentleman. He actually came and he was, he's not even over our ward, and he's offered, and the office is still open, anytime I need any help. And he was telling, he's he's actually UKIP, his name's uh Mark Staplehurst. If you want to investigate, I I'm not s- I'm not, I don't know this man, I'm not gonna blow smoke up his chimney. But he was telling me of his heart and his concerns and what he goes up against in in his service. He's UKIP and he 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 does a charity, he helps elderly people, now he was telling me when he. He he was cha- I think in his political career, he said he had a desire to serve the community. And he just, after a lot of um rare, he told me that it's all tight-knit in Farnborough and all the shot by the Conservative Party. Um, I was a Mormon, David Clifford, he he's the uh, he was the deputy mayor at one point, or the mayor. And he's now the leader of the council, now he's a Mo- he's a Mormon, he's another one, right? He, I was in that church and he was saying how, and he actually wrote a paper in the uh at the. While he was the mayor, he, an article in the s- in the Star newspaper. Calling out all these tight-knit Tor- Tory Conservatives and and rebuking them. But, you know, it turns out the man's no different, he he's um, the man is a a Mormon. Now Mormons swear secret oaths above the law. Cause they they swear an oath, and it's the same as a Masonic oath, you know, they used to cut their throat and do. I never done it, thank thank the Lord, I never got that deep into it. But certain members will progress to take that oath in what's called their temple. And it's a Masonic lodge, basically, in the name of holy innocent Jesus Christ. These people aren't Christians, they're false, they're deceived and they're liars, and they swear an oath. Above that of the oath of our Queen and our Lord, and these people should be out of office. They should either renounce what they practise and come forward. Now, I said earlier that by their fruits you shall know them, only two of these people, and funnily, isn't it, how they're both UKIP? Now, Mister Stapleton, um. And David Berry, I don't think they're even in the same ward, so Mister um. Mark Staplehurst was telling me when he, when he decided to change parties and go go to UKIP. He went up to Nigel to see Nigel, or he met, I don't know where it happened, but he said he met Nigel Farage. And Nigel Farage said, I will only take representatives that will put their community first. They will put the the people above and beyond, and you go and look. You go and check this man out, see what work is done in the community, if you live in Farnborough, you live in that area there. In any of those wards, in the in the in the Rushmore Borough Borough area. You go and look at this for yourself and see the fruit, you don't see any of these other people. You don't, you can't get hold of them, and I've contacted uh in the past our local Conservative. And they've just winked at corruption, you know, I've gone for serious help in my family, and they just all keep it under wraps and brush it over. Give you a wishy-washy, oh, we're dealing with it, all this rubbish, and they wink at it, they're devils. And they are wicked and they need to repent, so this is basically what I wanted to get across. So I'm gonna invite you to, now, I'm gonna give all these, I haven't had a response, right, I'll probably get a response now. Now I've done this um, uh this video, and I'll tell you why I I I'm suspecting a response. Because this house is wired, when I looked after my mother, I had, uh, there was a lot of corruption going on with my care. And they weren't giving, they were saying they were giving her the proper treatment, but they weren't, they were, they were cutting their their um. My mum had a serious leg injury, and they're telling me it wasn't infected, when I found out it was infected. And I had to go for all these tight with um loop loops and duck under these. Uh conditions to get my mum lawfully out, and I had to fight, I had to fight with the Lord. With the Lord's grace, and that's the only reason I got my mum out of hospital, cause they were trying to keep her in there, to cover up their own. Bloody error and and, you know, kill her off quietly, and um I fought and got her to give the care for her at home. Which she was desperately crying out for, from the moment she went in there, they neglected her and passed her from one person to another. And none of them wanted to deal with it, and they all closed rank. And I had to go for all the legal requirements to get my mum back in her own house so I could look after her. And then it turns out that the palliative care nurse team weren't, they were only um dressing her every other day. They legally had to dress my mum's wound every day, she she just had a brain tumor operation, she's vulnerable. And one night she fell off the bed and I called an ambulance driver, this lady come out, she gave my mum a, she was a param- fully qualified paramedic. And uh she gave my mum a full medical and a report, her oxygen level and her infections. She said, your mum's got an infection, and I said, well, these people are telling him, they were pushing me out of the room because of telling me it was my mum's dignity. Give and just bandaged in over my mum's infection, and the doc, I heard the doctor Fairburn on the phone refuse my mum. Uh penicillin or antibiotics, it was disgusting, and these people closed rank, I got a phone call. To say, oh, we've we've heard that you're refusing your mother medication, you wouldn't do that with you, Andrew, they were threatening me on the phone. So, I knew, that I knew, but I can't prove it, cause they all closed bloody rank. And that and and this is the same with these blooming people, they need a good kick up the backside. So, I had this lawful document from this uh ambulance driver. Now, I couldn't expect her to deal with it, and she was busy and had to go off, she says, keep this, you need to challenge these people. You need to stand up for them, she said, and then she she had to go on an emergency call. She gave me the lawful document and I concealed it in my home. Well, after my mum died, and that was, that was tragic enough, they were just trying to get her into Phyllis Tuck, wanna finish her off quickly, and they did. You know, with drugs, in a matter of minutes, hoping this would go out the window. Then I learned that all the funeral system is all thick and they're all tightly knitted, that, that's another story. And they're all in bed with each other and they all get a pinch out of the purse, Freemason, um. Undertakers, the local council are all involved and the local church, I told the church to take a hike. So don't teach salvation at the at the service, and it's hypocrisy. So I just wanted to get it over and done with, my dad and I cha- wanted a cheek funeral, they charged us an extra thousand pounds for. Another, uh uh they had, they told us a lea- a doctor had to, he had to two certificates from a doctor just to to make sure. You know, your my mum was dead and it was disgusting, you know. So, I had this legal document concealed in my house, no way would they have found it by accident. They came to collect all the stuff after my mum had died. And when I went to go back to get this document, they'd been there and taken it, these uh palliative nurse teams. Were all covering their own arse, right, and they excuse my language. And they um went honed in on that straight away, and the bloody cheek is, they left all the stuff they came to collect. And I had to throw it out, so the only thing that they come round for was that document and they stole it. And this is um Alexandra Road ser- surgery, the the doc, my doctor was. She was the matron of the palliative care, and she was controlling the nurse teams, it's all a flipping corruption. And it's wicked, and I, you know, I I've got no legal support. All these people, you write to them, they ignore you, I've reported, I've reported this to several people, they're aware of it, there's no action be taken. You get this character assassination, oh, he's he's paranoid, he smoked dope and blah, 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 you know, they just trash you. They assault your character like it's Terry Bridgeman, hate, hate, you're a hate crime, you're a hater, I'm gonna call that, forward it to the police. You know, this is how they keep vulnerable people down, they walk all over them, they close rank, they can go to, they are going to hell. And they are under condemnation of the devil, you know, Christ is handing these people over to Satan. And they're gonna get a taste of their own medicine if they don't repent, and this, this, I like to share this. With the public of, you know, Farnborough and um, you know, I'm gonna leave it there, I've had enough of it. Right, just some additional thoughts and scripture, um. Second Corinthians one three, this is the third time I come into you. In the mouth of two or three witnesses shall every word be established. Hebrews six, verse eighteen, that by two immutable things in which it is. That by two immutable things in which it is, it was po- impossible for God to lie, we might have a strong consolation. Who have fled for refuge to lay hold upon the hope set before us. That's talking about the resurrected Lord Jesus Christ. Um, Hebrews nine twenty seven. As it is appointed unto men once to die, you can't deny that, but after this, the judgment. Um, who is a liar? But he that denies that Jesus is the Christ, he is Antichrist that denies the Father and the Son. And this is a lawful book of our nation. It's written into our laws. Um, and every spirit that confesseth not that uh Jesus Christ has come in the flesh, is not of God. And this is the spirit of Antichrist, wherever you have heard that it should come. And even now already is it, it was in the world. So the Antichrist is al- is al- has always been here and it's in the world today. Um. And this is the com- his commandment, this is Christ. That we should believe on the name of His Son Jesus Christ and love one another, as He gave us commandment. That simply, the only commandment today is to believe in Jesus Christ and be saved. In a nutshell, and to love, love God with all your heart, mind and will, and love thy neighbor as thyself. That, what is wrong with that? That is Christianity in a nutshell, there's no need for religion. And I just want to uh conclude about some final thoughts, um, just in case I, I, I over, you know, missed these things. Um, I cannot speak for, although I sent those con- uh condemning email. And quite right, cause I, I'm just speaking the truth from the word of God. Now, that might be, tha- tha- that might, um, aggravate some people, but it's simply the truth, um. I can't speak for the two people that, uh, re- that the, didn't get the email. And I, and I've spoken for the two, um, gentlemen that replied. And, and the other people, I just simply don't know. So i- if the ca- is the case of vista cat fits where, now, um, these people may be on their sickbed, some of these people may be on holiday and not had time to respond. Well, the truth is what the truth is. And I, I don't, like I say, I didn't want to, I mean, it's, it's nothing personal. It's just a faithful witness of the truth. And so how it's received, i- i- it wasn't intended to offend anyone. Even though the truth does offend people, I've been offended by the truth. Sometimes we just don't wanna hear the truth, you know? Um, and we have to humble ourselves and re- evaluate our lives and consider the truth and examine, uh, what our own actions are. And the, you know, like the scripture says, by their fruits you should know them. So that's my, just my concluding thoughts, um. Like I say, I can't speak what's in any of these people's hearts. I know, I, I know only the one, the two men and the one man who come around to my house. Now, I, I, I can't, I can't even speak for them. Only by what, what I've witnessed personally. And I know one of them is, is a Christian believer. I can't speak for the other one. Uh, so that's up, that's up for people to decide and examine for themselves. And, um, they'll look at the fruits of what they do, you know, the, the proof's in the pudding, you know? So people know, people aren't stupid, people see it, people in the end see it. It's just the general population don't get to hear about these things because it's, i- i- it's not communicated. You see the window dressing and you see, you know, you see, every, you know, some people may have great things to say about these people. You know, a lot of people had great things to say about Adolf Hitler and Polk and, and Stalin, you know, you can, you can find so much good in some of their behaviour, but i- i- it's the overall heart. And uh, whether they really have our best interests at heart is what's under the question really. So I'm gonna leave it there and in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. Okay, with my uh councillor journal, I just want to just give some additional thoughts of the Mormon church and the lies and the corruption within that body of people. Now, re- regarding, I mentioned that, uh, David Clifford, if he is still a member. I, I cannot vouch for the man, but uh, he was a member when he was the mayor. Um. Now, the pain and the hurt that one goes through when you, when you leave that church. It's a big corporate business and it controls people. And the members on the inside don't get to hear of your experiences. Cause it's all controlled, even though you write and express your feelings towards the individuals. And you're not against them, you're just against the doctrine they teach. But it's probably one of the most painfulst things that I've had to experience. Especially amongst all those people and on top of all the other things I've experienced. And I've seen the fallout. You know, not just in this country, but uh globally, in America and in Europe. And all the testimonies are the same, that it's a lie and it's a deception. And it is based on Freemasonry. Now, the members don't see it because they're blinkered and they're, i- i- you know, there's a lot of good things in the church. And, but that's down to the individual people. And I have nothing against the individual people. I'm very fond of the ward I was involved with. And they never really get to, got to hear of my experiences. And they don't wanna hear anyway because it, you know, undermines their faith, their belief systems. But I wanted to just share an account for a, a family that I'm very fond of. I'm still in contact, only just. And, and I've seen the wound that they've, it shattered their family comple- completely. And I know there's other members in the ward who've since left the Mormon church. Um, round, you know, round the same time as the, uh, my friend. Now, I left in two thou- I think it was in two thousand and ten. So that's seven years ago I've been out. And, and it's, it's still as raw now as it, it was back then. It's a dreadful, dreadful consequence. And I've seen, um, families completely devastated by it. And my friend, um, I actually wrote to the Mormon church and, and, and in Salt Lake City to demand that they take my record, my name off their record forthwith. And, and to not have any official contact because they will, you know, they make out that you're the one, you're the devil. They teach their members that you lose the Holy Ghost and you, you, you're a Satan and it's the only true church. It's complete nonsense, it's absolutely rubbish. I've, I've never been in such, never, never felt so much peace, um. And that's because of the Lord Jesus Christ. It robs people of that relationship. And I only hope that those people, you know, just grow stronger in their faith and come out of that lying system. It is false doctrine, doesn't teach the gospel. The gospel didn't need to be restored, you know, Christ is the rock. You can't relay down the foundation that Jesus laid. It's his death, burial and resurrection, that's the foundation. And, uh, and, and like when Peter, the Lord asked Peter, who, who, who do people say that I am? You know, and some say this and some say that. And others say you're the Christ. And, and the Lord said, well, who do you say I am? And Peter said, you're, well, you're the Messiah, you're the Christ. And he says, this is the foundation I will build my church on. And if you look at that, and, and the Catholics try and earn that as well. It's simply the per- Peter's testimony was this faith that he knew that Jesus was the chosen a prof- uh, appointed Messiah to come. That's who they were looking for. That's who the faithful Jews were looking for to come. Not everybody understood it. Jesus had to explain it to these children of his, these, the seed of Israel. And so that's simply the testimony on the rock is an individual's confession of faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. And that puts you on the rock by what he done, by his death, burial and resurrection. And, um, now this family, um, has just, I don't know, you know, whether I should mention his name or not, but this family has just come out of the church. And he, yeah, they've really struggled, the whole family, to pick up the pieces. It, you know, it's a day, it's a day by day healing process and gathering yourself. And the family's still hurt by it. Not everybody, eh, they're not as close, they were a very close family. They were very sort of, uh, you know, favoured family, well beloved family in the, in our local Farnborough ward. And we, we used to meet in an old school, uh, the old school I used to go to, Fan Hill Comprehensive School. And, um, now he was telling me of an account recently. Now this shows you the hypocrisy of this church. Him, he and his wife, um, now I, like as I said earlier, I, um, wrote and said I didn't wanna have any contact. And that's how I severed my ties. But he, I, I can't speak for, for my friend, my brother. He's my brother in Christ, he's a profess- professing believer. He's got a testimony, he's a safe man in Jesus Christ. And he, he was sharing me his experience. And he went through the court, the church have a court system and or, and they went to a personal interview. I didn't go through the, I don't think they went through the court system. They just had an interview with the local ward bishop who's, who's appointed to, by the hi- higher, um, authorities in the church, they, they appoint who they want to be bishop. Now, they believe it's a calling from God, but it, it's not, it's, i- it's done by, it's run by men. It's a, it's a manmade order. It's founded on, um, you know, aniqu- aniquitous hierarchical system. And no one can question the authority above them. It's all one way down the bottom. And, and you get, it's like, you know, like, like a lot of parish priests, they don't get a choice of who, who their pastor is. They're, they're, you know, they're there one minute and they could be moved off. And it's the same in, in, in the Mormon church, it's run by men. And this family went to see the bishop and his name's Jo- Miles Johnson, he's the active bishop of Farnborough Ward. And, uh, my friends and his wife are sha- uh, sharing their testimonies and handing their letter of resignation into, into the Miles Johnson, the bishop, current bishop. And, um, my friend asked him, oh, do you believe in Joseph Smith as a true prophet? Uh, and, and now this Miles Johnson confessed, which is an, um, a postate offence. He said, no, I don't, I don't. He, and then he advised my friend, oh, why didn't you just go along and believe it? And then it'd be all, you know, life would be all quiet and sweet kind of thing. And, and that's the hypocrisy. And I wanted to share that, just to show any mem- uh, member of Farnborough Ward watching this, that, that it's a lie, you know, you, when you come out of the church, you, you know, you, you're gonna get adversity from Satan. But you don't get any in the church, you know, it's not true. Um, i- i- it's a big, it's a big umbrella of deception. It is an occult based system of mind control. And I've experienced the mind control and the people involved. Now, that, the ward doesn't see it. But there's secret stuff going on that, that many of the members aren't aware about. It's a dark branch. It's like a lot of things, they're infiltrated by wicked people. And they're all sheltered by, you know, the, the main church. Who, who, who can just turn around and say, oh, we, that's unacceptable, we're less communicate them. But they never change. You know, it, it carries on happening. And, 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 and the people who are guilty of, who get caught in offence are scapegoated. And it's very well known about that, eh, even, even the general authorities haven't seen, they haven't seen Jesus Christ and they know it. And, and eh, if these people just look behind the scene, this, eh, 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 the house of cards will fall down in their hearts and minds. And then they could, if they can get over the, the pain and the devastation. Cause this family had invested years and years and years of their lives believing. You know, they, they all, they all believed in Jesus Christ. But it's the additional bit, it's the true church, it's not the true church. True church is in the hearts of believers by the confession of faith. And if they just read the scriptures, throw the book of Mormon away and read your King, the King James Bible is wonderful. If you keep hold of that and study the scriptures through with your blinkers off, you'll see the truth and the truth will set you free. And it's hypocrisy. Many people in the church don't believe it. You know, that came to a shock to me. I thought everybody believed it. No, but there's people who don't believe it. And they're called to authoritative positions. And they don't say, oh, no, thank you, I don't believe it. They just lie, they're liars. Cause they're deceived. And they're deceiving all the poor people. And there's a lot of vulnerable people in that ward. And that's who I care about. And that's who I wanna reach out to. It's a deceptive system. And I would just like to invite those to, you know, challenge, question, examine yourselves. Reevaluate your life and have, are you safe? Do you know the Lord Jesus Christ personally? Have you got the holy, have you got the real Holy Spirit? I'm not talking about the deceptive spirit. I'm talking about a God fearing, loving, peaceful, full of so much joy, you cannot express it. That's the Holy Spirit. Look at Galatians six or chapter five, the fruits of the spirit, joy, long suffering, peace. All, all the good wonderful things. And I know there's good wonderful things in the church. There's, there, there was good in the Third Reich. You know, Hit- you could point out Hitler and say, oh, what a lovely, kind person he was towards animals. But then you look on the other side, it, it's murdering people and ticking off having Jews and Gypsies killed. And experiment on, on babies and children in hospitals. So you have to be honest with yourself. And you have to evaluate the complete broad range and the history of what's behind it. Now, when I joined the church, there's no internet and they lie to you before you go in. I was lied to. And i- it's deception. So I wanted to include this in, on my jo- on the journal for the councillor thing. Simply because, um, David Clifford, he, he's a member of the church. I have nothing against David, um, or his family. I only wish them the best and to, to be saved and come out of that wicked lying system and stop supporting it. And then, and then their lives will flourish. They're, you know, the, the Lord will bless them. You know, these are talented people, these are lovely people. You know, the Mormons aren't bad people, they're, a lot of them. They may be a bit pride, but that's the doctrine of the church, just sucking them up in this mould, making them sharp like fawns. But they don't see it because they're so wrapped in their faithfulness to the prophet. The prophets are liar, we don't need any prophets today. All you need is the Lord Jesus Christ. And, and the, and the lessons of the, the Old Testament prophets up until John. You can still learn from these prophets. Prophecy is prophecy. And prophecy is today is fulfilled in Jesus Christ. He's completed his work. It's finished, he said on the crossfire, it's finished, it's done. And when you call upon his name, your salvation's brought and paid for by him. And it's done, it's completed. And all you can do is rest in him and, and experience abundance of life for eternity. And that is simply what, uh, the Lord's invitation to, you know, come unto me, all, all ye that are heavy laden and I shall give you rest. Um, read up on Hebrews four, you know, the Lord says, um, in the scriptures, uh, whoever the author was of Hebrews, it says, you know, examine yourself. Are you saved? Have you entered into that rest? And the, and the warnings for not truly enter into that rest because of unbelief. And if you believe, you, you will be sealed by the Holy Spirit of promise. And you will know God and God will, God will make himself known to you. And you will be in that his rest, in that eternal rest. The eternal Sabbath, who is Christ. And you will know that, you won't need any man to tell you anything and you'll be saved. And you'll be grateful and, and that doesn't make life, all the problems in life go away. That doesn't make you stop sinning. Or having the na- the sinful nature. And it won't stop you being attacked by the devil. You'll be attacked by the devil more. You'll face persecutions, false witness and all sorts of troubles if you love the Lord. Because you're going against the, the world, you're going against everything that's Antichrist. So I wanted to leave that additional, um, testimony wi- along with the councillor thing. Simply because Da- David Clifford's a member and, you know, um, regardless of, of what, you know, the, the things I've said. I, I don't have any animosity or any hatred in my heart towards any, any man, woman or child. And, um, I just wanted to reach out to him and his family as well. And I, and I didn't, uh, write this, these emails be solely because of him. I generally done it for a testimony of the gospel for every single one of those people on, on the board of, of councillors and for their families. And bec- simply because they're in a position to make a a wonderful difference in the community. So um I'm gonna leave it with that, uh my thoughts there, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.